Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our October 12th City of Gallatin Council's Committee Meeting. First, I'd like to call to order and begin this meeting with Ms. Kitchell giving us a roll call.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander. Councilwoman Phan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. The next item is the approval of the minutes for August 24th and for the Planning Commission meeting on September 14th. Do we want to take them together?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, let's move on. We now move on to public recognition. For anyone who would like to address the council, please approach the podium. We ask that you provide your name and address.
Good evening, City Council. It's Mr. Patrick Greeners, P.A.T.R.I.C.K.J.E.Y.S.O.N.R.E.N.E.R.S. Lived in this town since 99. And I come to talk about my American dream today. Is that I would, if I thought I had the ability, would confront politicians and people with answers.
I don't think we got an address.
Oh, 317 Malone Drive.
Thank you.
And I would hope to provide solutions rather than problems and regress instead of progress. And then try to run, to commit myself to the public to make progress when all I've done is regress. That would not be my American dream. To bring some beautiful woman into a town that already had a highway moved into it and couldn't get a bed and bat, bed and bat, bed and breakfast approved, would take it out in the city. I wouldn't do that. Wouldn't be my American dream. My American dream would try something else. And try to address the people and tell them things that, you know, the people needed and would be beneficial to the public, rather than some guy, guardrails that got hit where no one did no research if it was hit by a drunk driver and if it was a problem. So I think the American dream for all people should be tried to promote progress, unity. And then, I wouldn't say, if your American dream is to complain and rant, pack your stuff and go back to wherever you came from. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in Gallatin. And the reason why I'm stepping to this podium today is on number 12 on the agenda with regard to rehab paving. My concern is this. When you pave back at seventeen and a half feet on your streets, those streets are substandard to start with. They need to be at least 20 feet wide. So there's no use in paving it back until you widen the street to begin with. And we have several streets in our community that need to be taken care of. And I'm gonna give you a classic example. Now Bentley Circle, anybody that's been down through there, in fact, I was through there today, that street was repaved at 17.5. You know what happened down on Bentley Circle a few years back? We had a problem where one of our trash trucks got into a cahoots with a little lady that stood in the middle of the road because she was scared because it was a big, big truck coming at her. And there was a crash. And our man got a chargeable out of it because he was trying to slide by this pretty lady parked in the middle of the road on whatever, because of the fact that the street was too narrow for the equipment. I brought this to your attention many, many times before. So you need to look at this as you go to pave. There's no use in putting the pavement down until you widen the street. I don't care where you are. So anyway, I'll leave that to you, Mr. Tuttle. He's a wise man on our, in our engineering department. So that's my piece for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing no one else, we will close public recognition. Turn over to her on there.
Thank you. I do want to share with you just a few events that are coming up. Halloween is upon us. And so I'm gonna go through this list and mention all the Halloween events because I know people are interested. And hopefully there are people, although we don't have many here this evening, hopefully some people will watch and get some good information for things to do with the kids. First off, not necessarily Halloween related, is the Moonlight Market at the Gallatin Farmers Market. That's this Friday. This Saturday is the Unity Weekend Block Party at First Baptist Church on Winchester, also not Halloween related, but I think it's a good thing to know about. In conjunction with that, I also want to tell you all that this weekend Pastor Derek Jackson is celebrating his 20th year at First Baptist Church. So if you see him about, send him a congratulations. The city is presenting a proclamation to him and certainly sending our well wishes. But if you see him, please acknowledge that and tell him thank you for all he does for the community. Now, a couple of Halloween things. Hocus Pocus at the Palace Theater, happening on Saturday, two showings, four and seven. There's also a Ghouls Night Out in Historic Downtown. I don't have the details on who the organization doing that is, but it's from 5:00 until 8:00 PM. I'm sure you can find the information online. And then Haunts at the Font, not in the city, just outside the city at our beloved Crag Font. And that happens from 6:00 until 10:00 PM. Also coming up on the 23rd, which is the following Saturday, is the Civic Center's Annual Pumpkin Splash, happening at the indoor pool from 12:00 to 2:00 or from 3:00 until 5:00. Friends of Bledsoe Creek State Park is having their trunk retreat from 6:00 to 8:00 on that Saturday. And also the Gallatin Chamber of Commerce's 100th Anniversary Gala happens that night. I do want to mention that the Mayor's State of the City Address is happening on the 25th, which is the Monday. And for future planning, know that Trick or Treat on the Square this year will happen on that Friday, the 29th, from 10:00 PM, 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. And then on the 30th, there'll be Halloween Fun at the Gallatin Farmers Market. And that's open from 9:00 to 1:00 with Halloween events from 10:00 till 12:00. And then First Baptist Church across the street from City Hall is also doing a trunk retreat that evening, the 30th, from 5:00 until 7:00 PM. So that's a rundown of events. And I think that's all that I would have to share with you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's move on to our agenda. Item number one, Mr. McCord. Josh.
Thank you, Councilwoman George. My name is Josh King. I'm the Assistant City Mayor. The Historic Zoning Commission is asking for funding to replace an existing decorative street sign for the East Main Street Historic District. The sign has been up for at least 15 years, if not longer. In talking with Mr. De Priest, he's gotten a cost estimate of $92 to replace that sign. And we are asking City Council essentially for your weigh-in on if this sign should be replaced. And Councilwoman Love is actually the City Council Representative on the Historic Zoning Commission Board.
I think a citizen might have contacted Richard first, and then he let me know. And I went and looked. And it looks like it's, the words or the decals are just peeling off of it. And I don't know if we need a whole new sign or if just another decal can be ordered. But it's not, it's nice to have it there designated as Historic District.
Did you, does somebody give a price of how much it is?
Richard sent it out to a vendor. It would be $92 to replace the sign.
That sounds reasonable enough to do it.
Yeah, me too.
Need to do that. I make a motion to send it on.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're getting to stay here. Item number two.
This is an ordinance rezoning 9.982 acres from R40 to the MRO District for Nichols Phase, Phases Two and Three. This is located south of Nichols Lane, near where Clear Lake Meadows intersects with Nichols Lane. This is the overall development. It's a continuation of the first phase, and the developer is extending Ferguson Boulevard to the end of their development, end of their development, which would leave about a 50-foot gap for someone when the next property develops for that to be extended.
Looks very walkable.
It is a, it is a continuation of the first phase of our townhome. So it's a fairly compact development. And the architecture for Phases Two and Three will be a mirror image of the architecture that was approved in Phase One.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, appropriating funds. Rachel, Ms. Nichols.
A couple of weeks ago, the mayor mentioned possibly using some of the upcoming ARPA funds for hazard pay for the employees. And this is an ordinance to appropriate that money and start the process.
And a couple of things that I want to add to that. We can't do, we'll move it on. If this council is agreeable, we won't be able to do second reading until we actually get those ARPA funds delivered to the city. And I do want this council to be aware that while we think that every employee will qualify as essential, there is a chance that the feds or the state could come back and say, oh, no, these aren't essential. In which case, those would be dollars from our general fund. I do feel like there are other areas where we'll be able to offset general fund expenses with ARPA dollars. And I think it's a very, very worthwhile thing to do at this point for our employees, considering what they've been through, considering what the job market is doing, considering all the challenges that they have had as individuals and we are having as an employer. And, but key, that, you know, our employees are our most valuable asset. And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something really meaningful for them. And I'm excited about being able to do this. And I think you all indicated that you were supportive, but I hope we can move forward.
Well, this is just a one-time bonus is all. It's not their pay increase. It's just a bonus.
No, it is a, it is a hazard pay supplement, not, this is something that we're able to give them because they have worked and been endangered, if you will, by their exposure to COVID.
Well, it's not a recurring expense.
Right. It's one time, like I said, once, I think a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be able to do something like this for our employees.
Right. But we also have something coming up with, where we will be able to revise pay scales, too.
Yes, we're doing the pay study. We should have that done by budget time next year. Also, do have a proposal I want to share with you at the end of the meeting under other business.
Will it, will it be a long process between, if, with the essential portion of it? If you decide, okay, this is essential, and then they say, no, it's not, will that go back and forth for a while?
No, no. I think what we do is we go ahead, we allocate the funds, because they could come back years from now and say they weren't essential. We go ahead, we allocate those funds, we go ahead and we give the hazard pay to our employees. And if at some point they come back and say that wasn't eligible, then we just take it from the general fund, which we will. I, I think there won't be any question about most of our employees, but should there be some, we're going to have the ability to offset that with general fund dollars and, and stay in compliance with the rules and, and, you know, do something good for employees.
Motion, send it on.
Second. Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols?
This next item is updating our debt management policy. About 10 years ago, we approved a debt management policy. This year, the state of Tennessee made some changes in the law in how financing leases are handled. And we just need to update the wording in our policy to reflect that. In addition to that, I've got another policy right after. And then in the coming weeks, I'll have a few more. We're trying to get everything lined up for our next bond issue that the general fund, or the general obligation bond issues. We're very close to having our credit rating upgraded. And our financial municipal advisor feels that if we can get some of these policies in place, that will really help when we go to the rating agencies. So over the next couple of months, I'll bring probably a half dozen different policies, either existing ones that we just need to update and refresh, or new policies that we want to put in place and have before we go back to the bond market.
Send it on.
Second.
Rachel, can you give us just a highlight of what changes they're making in here?
Debt management policy, we have to treat financing leases as a debt issue. There's a required form that has to be filled out and sent to the state. Anytime governments borrow money, it gives a summary of the interest rate, what the purpose is, who the lender is, our payback, that type of information. It's a one-page, or two pages now, summary report, and that will be required for any financing leases that we have.
Thank you.
Heard the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, this next one is an investment policy. That would be a new policy for the Basically, the state of Tennessee tells us what things we can invest, invest in and what things we can't. But to have a policy, the fact that we want to review it annually with council, there will be quarterly reports of how the money is invested, our idle funds, just being more transparent with those dollars and what we do with them and the interest that we earn from them. I'll be glad to answer any questions, or if this is first time seeing it and you'd prefer to put it off a couple of weeks, I'm fine with that, too. As I said, we just want to start putting some of these policies in place before we go back.
Motion, send it on.
Second. Any conversation, discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed?
I encourage you to read this, though.
Next topic.
Next topic is our financial reports for the month of August. Those were included in your packet. And then before the meeting, I handed out our sales tax graph. It's still pleasingly shocking how the sales tax collections are going. So very pleased with that. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the financials. But two months in, we're, we're doing well so far. No surprises.
Don't do anything with that? Okay.
A question. Where's most of our sales tax revenue coming from now? What sector? Retail?
Yes. Don't get a breakdown specifically by business, but get a little bit from internet retail, but most all of it's our local.
Is it broken down by any chance by restaurant versus retail stores like clothing, Walmart, Dollar General, all that?
That's not something we typically receive, but I can look into it and see if we can get a breakdown.
Thank you.
Nichols, the next one.
We have been looking at the water intrusion issues at Fire Station Five for a couple of years now. And we had asked, we had hired a consultant to give us an estimate of what it would cost to have the repairs that should have been in place first. I don't want to say too much. Ms. McCauley, we're going to mediation with the construction firm, the engineer, no, the architect and their civil engineer on the project. That's upcoming. So I just want you to know that when we do bid out the repairs, we do have a funding source for those repairs. That's the reason I'm here tonight.
Are they trying to settle it, Susan, or?
We're required by our contract to go to mediation first. We're hopeful that it will settle. But at the same time, I probably will be surprised if it does.
But I think with this particular action, the important thing to know is that the fire station has problems. We need to get them fixed.
Day one.
We have an estimate, and we're going to move forward and use various sources of funds to pay for it at this time.
What was the estimate?
I don't have that here with me. I'm sorry. But we had funds that we had to deposit with the state of Tennessee when we did the Greenlee Extension from 386 over to Long Hollow. And they made us put money up front. We actually gave them too much, and that money's been returned to us. And that was from the 2014 bond issue. So we have funds back in that bond that could be spent for this purpose. And before we sent it out to bid and started receiving quotes and possible signing of contracts, we wanted you to be aware that we did have a funding source to do the repairs until the mediation and whatever legal actions are.
And we are required to go ahead and start remediation ourselves so that the issue is not worsening. And so that's what we're attempting to do right now, is to start remediation to get those issues resolved while we're in litigation.
Motion, send it on.
Second.
There's, I'm sorry. We just wanted you to be aware that we do have a funding source. Until this is bid out, we won't have an ordinance to appropriate the money. But at that time, I'll bring something back for that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's what she was saying.
Got it, sorry.
Thank you.
De Priest.
Good evening. This is a ordinance appropriating funds from the sale of street signs. What this is, when developers come in and develop something, they purchase the signs, give us a check, and then this will, we'll install the signs, but this money's just going over to our, to the street department to where, for the actual purchase and installation of the signs.
She showed John D. His little men's size.
I've got a bunch of them for you.
He wants to buy them all. Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This next one is a ordinance, just basically transferring funds, money, the funds that we've received from selling recyclables. Cardboard is actually doing really well right now. The glass, the plastic, of course, we're still paying for, but glass and metals is doing somewhat okay. But the cardboard's really starting to pick up, making $205 a ton right now. So it's changed a lot in the last six months. This is just moving the money from one account to, back into the Public Works Administration.
Motion approved.
What period of time is this?
Second.
Discussion, me?
From July 1st.
July 1st, okay, thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move it on, thanks. Mr. Tuttle.
The next two items are both resolutions for acceptance of public infrastructure. One is for Baywood Point Phase 4A, the other is for Baywood Point Phase 4B. They include roadways of Summer Star Circle, Sundown Circle, Westbrook Drive, and Fields Place. Of course, the Planning Commission recommended unanimously to approve and accept these roads.
Can you just send it both on?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We moved both of those on.
The next item is our recommendation for approximately half of the money that we have appropriated for repaving this year. As we explained a few weeks ago, we want to try to go ahead and, and get what we feel like are the no brainers and the worst roads in, in Gallatin taken care of. There are a couple of things that you don't see on this list that also are on our, our schedule to get paved, because they were on last year's list. But there was some utility work that we were working on to try to get done first. And so that's Small Street is not shown on this list, but that is something that we're scheduling to get paved now. And then also a portion of Big Station Camp Boulevard.
That little section?
It, it is the section from very close to Bison Trail up to the Stone Creek subdivision. And of course, if you hadn't been out, the mayor mentioned it to me today, if you hadn't been out and seen, which is not part of our paving budget, but that section that's in Hendersonville, or formerly, the, the art is formerly known as Hendersonville, that section is, is actually being repaired right now.
So that's it, I mean.
And St. Blaise is in here, too, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, St. Blaise. The portion from the railroad underpass, 386 underpass, up to right at 600 St. Blaise Road, which meets up to a joint that we actually just repaved just a couple of years ago.
You want me to read the street names?
They're in readers.
They're right here. The street names. Nick. Cairo Hall, North Locust, St. Blaise, Village Green, I'm sorry, misloved. And Village Green, Drive and Village Green Crossing.
I was gonna ask, Nick, how far on Cairo, or where on Cairo Road?
That's a good question. I noticed that we didn't put the limits. But there, there's a very noticeable joint right there past Runway Court. And then it goes around those two curves down to Linden Lee Way, which is the new subdivision that's right there. So it, it'll handle all that. That, that looks really bad.
Yes. Thank you.
What is the most likely to be considered list? When does that come up?
So as we were putting together this small list, these are the other streets that, that we also considered. And so when we come back with the, the remaining $450,000 to $500,000 in the spring, we'll be programming what we feel like are the, the next worst streets to be paved. And 95% chance they're on this list right now. There may be something that we have somehow missed, but most likely they're, they're on this list that you see on the right side of the paper.
Does he see something where you're gonna hire a consultant or something to?
That's, that is included. A few years back, it's probably been about three or four years ago, we had a consultant come out and, and review every single street in Gallatin to give us a rating on them. And so we're asking to do that again.
Something that's necessary? Do you feel like we need to do that, to pay somebody else to come do that?
The reason I do is because I don't feel like we have the manpower to handle it right now. And so I, I know this could pay for a person, but that's something that would be put on the city's payroll. And it's always difficult to add to the payroll. And so every few years to do something like this, I feel like that's, that's the best use of the money.
Mayor, I'm sure you agree with that, right?
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm the same as you when he first brought it to me. But when you think about having
you think about having an objective list of standards and it's not, you know, politically pushed on the engineering staff to make the recommendations versus the actual need, I think that's a good thing. I think it helps all of us to be able to say, look, these are fairly graded and presented.
How's it politically pushed?
Because, it would be human nature, I think, if I were to hear from you about a certain road every week for a year, that when it came time to grade these roads, I'd know that that was going to be your first interest.
But here, here he is, he gets the consultant to do it, they bring it back to us, right? We either say yes or no, or we change it up, we do it again, here we go. I mean, somebody says, okay, well, what about this road? It's the same thing.
But, but we, I feel like in recent years, we've really respected the experts.
Most of us have.
Ratings, gradings, or whatever of the road.
Most of us have.
And I do feel like they give us a, a, an analysis beyond, this one looks rough, or...
Sure, as a matter of fact, the consultant uses what's called an ASTM standard. They actually are, will have a van with multiple cameras on it.
Everything.
And, and so they, there is an opportunity for us to gather a little bit of GIS information too, we're not looking to pay for that, but that is something that they offer, and it'll be, as they say, in the can if we wanted to go back to that and, and ask them to pull that stuff back out, but it is a very scientific process, more so than walking out and...
Yeah, and I think over time, as we use that kind of analysis, it also gives us some predictability with maintenance and degradation.
Some benchmarking.
Yeah.
Correct.
Roads, so we know which ones we're having to repair more frequently, and those that, you know, are enduring longer, and we can plan accordingly.
Do, do they ever say anything about widened road?
Not with this kind of consultant. They're just simply looking at the condition of the road and, and giving us a score on that.
They make no recommendation about the road's too narrow, nothing like that?
No. That would be our department, or, you know, we would listen to issues that you would bring up, but to Mr. DeBoer's point, there are, many times, we do try to get as much as we can out of the width based on the existing conditions that are there, and we do try to add when we can. You know, some projects that, they would eat up a good portion of our budget for maintenance, and so it doesn't make sense for us to do it out of this budget. It would make more sense for us to, if we see that there are significant issues out there, to program, you know, specific money for that purpose. As you can see, you know, the roads that we have listed over here on the right, I do think that probably over the course of the next two to three years, that we're going to be paving all of them, and that's $3.5 million. Now, right now, we're putting $1 million annually in this budget, but we're adding to our city very, very fast, and, and the boom that we've seen over the past 20 years is, is definitely catching up with us from a paving standpoint. Usually you'll get 15 to 20 years out of these local residential streets, and we're seeing those things come up now, and so this, this paving budget is going to be something that we're, we're certainly, year after year, are going to need to be adding to it.
I think as we look at, at widening opportunities, that, because, you know, the widening's not just like, it's not just let's make a wider street, it's acquisition of right of way, and that's where it gets into a lot of money, and so I think that's where engineering needs to look at, the traffic demands on these narrow streets, because we will never widen every street that's not standard in the city of Gallatin, but there are certainly those that likely do need widening based on the use and the traffic and, and the opportunity. I mean, my neighborhood, widening those streets is going to be a challenge, because nobody wants a street on their front porch, so...
There are probably just as many people that don't want them widened as people that do. If you do widen them to 20 plus feet, now you're going to have more speeding complaints because people are going to have a more comfortable road width to ride on, and so there is some traffic pulled into that. I do understand Mr. DeBoer's points of service vehicles and things of that nature, but there are some, some things that are good about the streets being 16, 17 feet in width for these local streets that only serve, you know, a few houses.
In some places, I think better than even widening is putting sidewalks on.
I, I wasn't going to bring that up, but I know our planning department would certainly appreciate that.
And Mr. McCord's here to have heard me say that, will you please relay?
We'll pass that on.
Now, does this consulting firm, do they drive every road?
Every single street, every foot.
Do they check for safety issues, like bridges?
It's not what we're asking them to do. Just, just the paving condition. We could ask them to do a lot more.
Nick, what, briefly, what are they taking into consideration?
Sure, that, I could be, be happy to share with you our list of, of things, but, you know, they're going to be looking at the different type of pavement failures, and there are, there's probably about a dozen different types of pavement failures. For instance, you'll, you'll have longitudinal cracking, or, or alligator cracking, or maybe like on Big Station Camp Boulevard where you see the rutting starting to happen in the wheel paths, you know, those are failures that are going to be, you know, subgrade-related, where if it's just ravelling or pitting, as they call it, then that's just your surface course. So there's, there's different types of failures, and, and some things indicate that you've got issues with the subgrades, some is just simply the pavement, we can mill that off or even just surface over the top of it. So there's, there actually is a whole lot that goes into, into this, and again, they are going to be doing it to a specific national standard that can be reproduced and, and easy to compare the, the streets one to the other.
They ever recommend widening a road?
We're not asking them to do that. We, we could, we, we could, but we're, we're simply asking...
I think you should, I'm just wondering if they do.
Uh, I'm sure they would, I'm sure they'd be happy to, to do that and, you know, be paid more.
That's really going to take a traffic analysis and everything, right, which you guys can do.
It is true, right, and so the company that we're using, they, they can do it all, you know, they're one of those, those companies that, they have the traffic folks, they have the, the environmental folks, they have the, the pavement experts, but, but this specifically, we've gone to them because of their, their ability to analyze paving, so they're not getting any traffic engineers involved with this, just, just their, their maintenance guys.
How long will it process, Nick?
Matter of fact, they, I think they want to try to get started this week. We told them, no, not yet, but they can drive the city within probably three to four weeks, and then it's processing that takes quite a while because they have to bring that information back in process and, and then do the scoring. So altogether, it's, it should be about a two month, two and a half month process, and, and that was what we explained was important to us. We want to be able to have this information back in January so that we can get the recommendation in front of you and be ready to go March 1st for this second round of paving.
Motion to send it on?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Objections? No? Does the council have any other business they want to discuss?
I'd just like to say to Nick and Richard that we had a bad spot in our neighborhood that a lot of the neighbors got upset about and was constantly complaining about it, but they went over and repaved it and handled that spot situation, so thank y'all very much.
And I was going to mention that tonight, or this evening, as I was driving here, was the first time I saw our, our lights in the street in action, and they really looked great. It wasn't completely dark, it was, and they showed, it was just kind of twilight and they showed up really well.
No green men?
No. They're all at John D.'s house, I guess.
Richard, could I ask you a question? Over there where you all are doing that work on Head Track, how long do you think those porta-potters are going to be out there? Can they put a, any kind of cover in front of them?
They get them?
People watching you?
You talking about the Albert Gallatin Extension?
Uh huh.
Heard of Nick or James?
I'm sorry. Okay.
James don't know.
They're out there in relation to the Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension Project. Of course, we have extended that project, the, the majority of it, we are demanding that it be done by November 17th, but they're still going to be working on the bridge, and so we could possibly see those, those porta-johns moved to another location. They may find it more convenient actually to be closer to the bridge here in the next month, so we'll, we'll talk about that with them and see if it's something that they can do. But they're, they're actually, they're not going to be done with the bridge and, and paving work until early spring because they're going to have to wait until paving season opens back up, so something will be out there, but hopefully we can have it moved.
Yeah, the mayor?
Okay, I have something to propose to you all, and first of all, I apologize for it not being on the agenda. This is something that kind of started bubbling up for a few weeks, but I think last week it became like a full-fledged water spout. And to give you a little bit of background, you all know that we're having challenges hiring some positions, we are having a lot of turnover in some areas because of our pay, and we have embarked on this pay study, but we won't have results for quite some time, and the plan is not to do something with that until the coming budget year. Last week, we've learned that the county has done for their public safety employees a 15% increase in pay effective through the end of the fiscal year, just trying to stop their turnover and increase their retention. So Ms. Nichols and I got together last week, we started talking about things that we thought we could do, and we've looked at the numbers, we've looked at the positions, we've looked at the openings that we've had challenges with, and, you know, I certainly feel like this is out of the box. It's not something that I want to be in the position to do, but I think it's critical because when it comes to our citizens' health and safety, our, again, our employees are vital assets, and, and we need to do all that we can at this point to keep what I'm calling those critical infrastructure employees in place, in employment with the city of Gallatin. I always want to be fair to all of our employees, that's why I'm always so firm about, we need the pay study before we go making random changes to, you know, this department or that department or this department, because I'm really frustrated when I see other cities doing that. They just throw more money at one department because that department is favored for some reason, or, or that department, and they're not looking at how it affects all of their employees across the board, or how it affects the regional market. And so we, right now, are really victims of the regional market and some of our neighboring departments that are really, what we would say, out of market on the high end, and then just the general competitiveness for employees, right? So that's what's kind of gotten us here. So what I have, what I would like to propose to you all, and we can do this with existing funds because we have so many opening, open positions, is to do a 10% pay increase for a certain level of critical infrastructure employees, which would honestly be kind of our lower wage employees. To give you kind of rundown of what I'm thinking about, is it would be at our police department for police officers one and two, police officer trainees and evidence techs. Over to our fire department, it would be employees who had the rank of lieutenant down. At GPU, it would be plant operators down, and over at Public Works, it would be the mechanics and below. It is excluding all clerical and administrative employees because clerical and administrative employees have parallels throughout the city. Their job is not that different, we don't have a hard time attracting those, people to fill those jobs, and we don't have a hard time with retention. It's these other essential labor, critical infrastructure positions that we are very, very challenged with. And so I'm going to propose that we do a 10% pay increase for those employees in those positions through the end of the fiscal year. We'll be very clear that, actually, I'm saying 10%, and that's not what we decided upon, it's a four-step pay increase, which actually equates different than a 10%. So it's a four-step pay increase, but it doesn't increase their steps, four steps. And we're going to be very clear, if you all will be supportive of this, that we're going into a pay study, at the end of that pay study, they could get less money than they're getting with that 10%. We don't think so, we hope not, but, you know, we're doing this to keep them in those jobs and keep serving our people, and we would do the same with new hires. We would have them sign off saying, I understand that I am being hired at this rate, that the city is undergoing a pay study, this rate could and likely will change for the good or for the bad, and I accept this position with full knowledge of that. I don't, I don't feel bad doing it in these arenas because we know that these arenas are where the highest pressure is from in the market, because everybody's competing for those positions, whereas some of the other positions within our city, we, we, it's not as easy sometimes, but we're doing okay, and they're not jobs, say, say we've got some other jobs, it's not going to, it's not going to hurt our citizens if we can't perform the duties that, that job requires, or there's somebody else there to do it. It's not, it's not your water, it's not your utilities, it's not your public safety from fire and police, and it's not your trash in your streets. And so that's why I feel, I feel okay because of that reason, but also because we are doing this hazard pay supplement for all of our employees, so we don't have any employees who aren't getting some nice bonus this year. But then, to try and keep these others on, on our staff, I would like to propose that we do this for them. Ms. Nichols, I'm sure I haven't touched on something I was supposed to. I need to make a correction. It's engineers and firefighters at the fire department. Lieutenants are not included in this.
I'm sorry.
I, I told you wrong yesterday, and I forgot to correct it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's engineers, firefighter one, firefighter two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I have spoken to those four department heads, I have not vetted it with everyone, yeah, it's Mike went on, he just asked if the department heads were okay with it. Those four departments, the department heads were very grateful for the consideration, they thought it would help. There's a lot of stress with those leaders in those departments. There are positions that have been opened for a very, very long time with zero applicants, and when you start looking at what it costs to train in these positions, and the turnover and what it's costing us, if we can retain, we're saving money, even though we're laying out more.
If the pay study come back and it showed less than what we're doing, I would feel like in this, to this day and time, that I would be challenging the pay study itself, you know?
Good point. I, I mean, I, I just cannot imagine, I mean, there could be, particularly on maybe a, a longer term employee, there could be a situation where their position, that if, if they change the steps, there could be some isolated instance where people aren't getting the increase that they want, or that there is a slight decrease, not from their, not from their current pay, we're not going to do that, but say maybe their increase should only have been 5% instead of 10%, then they may go back, but I don't anticipate that at the lowest level employed.
So maybe in July that our pay study will be finished?
No, it should be done in time for budget next year.
By when?
Time for budget.
Okay.
So March.
So that way we could address all the employees if need be, hopefully.
Well, that's when we will have pay study results, and then we're looking, there's, I guess there's nothing to say that we couldn't do something sooner, I just don't think we'll be ready before the budget year begins.
Are you going to bring this to us next Tuesday?
Pardon me?
Are you going to bring this to us next Tuesday?
Well, I do have a resolution that Ms. Nichols created today, and, and, and I could have waited and brought this to you in two weeks, but with what the county is doing, with it becoming instantly effective, I want to be able to, you know, make some motion here. So I do have a resolution that Ms. Nichols has prepared. If Ms. Hy McCauley feels okay about it, and this council feels okay about it, I would like to put it on the agenda for next week.
Well, let, let me, I'm all for the 10% pay increase for our employees, but I think all of our employees are important, and I'd rather see it across the board than to pick out a select few and give them, because to me, it would show our other employees, if I'm, it's just like all of our council. Some of us got more time than others, but it would not be fair to give the senior council person more money than the other council person, because at the end of the day, all of us are council persons, so I would like to see it across the board.
I, I don't think that fiscally we would be able to do that, and, and then I'm really feared that would create some issues. And, and then I'm really feared that would create some issues with the pay study because remember, even in these departments, we're not looking at all employees. We're looking at those lowest wage earners who are doing the work that protect our citizens' health and safety, what I call critical infrastructure employees. And they are the areas where we're having extreme challenges in hiring that are actually, if it gets too much worse, are going to interfere with our ability to serve our citizens well. I also feel like us being able to do this hazard pay supplement is a bonus for all employees unlike probably any, any, anything that they've ever received in their time of employment with the government.
Let me ask one question. I mean, you got, and I talked to Richard and several people today, but you got, say for instance, at the, at the civic center, you got lifeguards that doesn't make but $10 an hour. And, and I don't know how much more critical they would be to protect somebody's life. And, you know, you're gonna be hiring your full-time, I mean, your summer people in, in April and May, trying to, trying to hire them, but you're not gonna be able to hire them at $10 an hour. And you still got people over there now, they, they're actually shut down in the mornings because they can't get lifeguards to work.
Well, I think that temporary pay is certainly, you know, a consideration. When we get there, I'm sure that we'll have the budget capacity to do that in, in, in instances where it's warranted and where the, where the competitiveness is there. But when you start looking at, you know, some of the other departments and, and yes, a lifeguard is life and safety in the course of somebody being in a swimming pool. But say we were in dire straits and we couldn't get employees and we couldn't make payment, the pool doesn't open. I mean, we don't have a pool, but, I mean, I don't want to get there, I don't think we'll get there. But, you know, this is something that we're addressing now before the next recreational season opens and...
You're saying you don't think we have the money to be able to give those folks a raise now?
I don't know what that looks like and I don't, and, and see, if we start going into areas that are not critical infrastructure, then we're going to have every department making a case for...
And I support this. I, I think we need to done this a long time ago. I think we're way behind times because most cities around us have been way ahead of us on this, so... But I think you need to look at more than just what you've got on this list. I think there's other folks that make $10 an hour and you can go down to, you can go down to McDonald's and work more than $10 an hour.
Well, under...
And, and, you know, and those folks are gonna have to be hired before pay study and, and before, you know, our budget comes out.
But realize with the part-time and temporary, there is some flexibility there with the department heads as long as it falls within the budget allowances, right? But, you know, I'm talking...
So the department heads can make their own decisions on those?
If they're justifiable and fall within the budget constraints, which we've had some challenges with, but...
Do we know how many people are included in this?
I can't tell you.
Who makes that decision, Mayor? Does it department heads, does, does personnel, do you? Who makes those decisions on those folks' life, the lifeguards? Who makes that decision?
Well, again, we've had some challenges with some actions trying to be taken that create some unfair circumstances and aren't covered by an existing budget. And so as long as it doesn't, it doesn't create conflicts other places in the workforce where there, there, there's not strong evidence to support it, it won't be challenged. But when, you know, when, when there are a lot of requests for raises all at once with patients that aren't covered by the budget, then we have to...
And I support this 100%. I'm just saying, I mean, just like in Public Works, I mean, you're still, I, I just don't feel like, you know, you're gonna raise this up to somewhere around $13 an hour. You're still not gonna find those general laborers to work for $13 an hour in that, in that department and the kind of work that they do. It's not gonna happen.
What, what, what's an alternate proposal that the city...
I gotta think, yes, and is there any, do we do performance reviews annually?
We do. And while I am always a proponent of merit increases, that's not something that our department heads by and large have been comfortable with and not something that this council has supported. We do annual reviews throughout the city. With a satisfactory review, they get a 2.5% step increase. And then, as you know, we consider cost of living increases in the budget each year as well.
Do we have any bonus plan for someone that's a good employee? It's been here three years and he, he's not lazy, he does his job. The department head appreciates him. Is, is there any way we could set up an incentive where they get a bonus instead of paying this money weekly or monthly however they get paid?
I don't think that, that, I mean, that could be something that we might consider in the future, but I don't think that that's something...
I know, it's worked for me in the past, the bonuses.
Right, but I, I don't...
To keep them there because they know what they're working toward.
Absolutely.
We in government, I think, I think that we would have far stricter perimeter, parameters for a department head to be able to award such a bonus. And we'd have to be very, very careful with that to be fair to our employees and to have clear expectations for them.
That bonus could be tied to that performance review that the department head has for them, too.
I mean, that's, that's their 2.5% increase. And, and so I hope that you can kind of look at this comprehensively and realize that there is a hazard pay supplement. They had a 2.5% COLA increase this year. They should have a 2.5% step increase. And then for these critical infrastructure employees, we're proposing an additional 10% through the end of the fiscal year.
And I just wanted to say that I have already reviewed the resolution. And it is a resolution, not an ordinance, because we do not have to appropriate money because these departments have had such difficulty in filling these positions. They have a lot of extra money in their budget. So there's no new money, there's no money to be appropriated, it's already in their budget. So it will be a resolution that can be passed on one reading rather than an ordinance. Typically, when we're doing anything fiscally, we have an ordinance, but this is different because the money's already there.
Do we know how many people there would be affected in this?
I, I'm, yes, I don't have that with me and Ms. Nichols had done that.
Let me, let, let me be, be very clear on my statement I just made. I am all for this raise, 100% for it. But I look at it from my personal view. If you gave two or three of these council members on this board a raise and you didn't give me one, I would feel real different about my position as a councilperson. And what I'm saying is this, if, if we favor some of our departments with this ray, with the raise or the incentive that we're doing, and we don't do it to the other department, I would feel like I wasn't really important.
I, I can appreciate that.
I really wouldn't.
I can appreciate that perspective, but I would submit that we are in entirely different environment where the competition for low-wage workers is so very, very high. And if we got into, do, I'll pick on engineering. You know, if we did 10% increases for engineering, we would be taking a very, very large budget hit that the city's not prepared to take at this time. I'm already thinking about how are we going to be able to fund what the pay study comes back to us with. And again, this isn't, this is our low-wage, critical infrastructure laborers, the people that we, the, the jobs that we cannot feel, fill, the jobs that we desperately need to retain people in. We're not having trouble retaining council members. We're not having trouble retaining, like I mentioned, clerical, clerical and administrative.
Oh, now, but if you start treating them differently, I bet you will.
Pardon me?
I said, no, we don't now, but I bet you will if you, if you do this, it will do something different.
But Councilman Alexander, there's a real different level of wages that people are making in some positions than in others. And when you have critical infrastructure employees who are trained and educated and put themselves in danger every single day, seeing job postings at fast food stores and Walmart that is more than what they make, that's the challenge we're in. None of us are gonna see that with, you know, our...
I, I, I would just express, you know, how I feel about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand that and I wrestle with that as well.
I personally would like to be fair, even across the board. So nobody can say that I'm showing any favoritism to anybody. Because when I vote, I'm gonna vote even across the board for every, because it's unfair. E-Even if we had to drop it down to 5%, 6%.
Yeah, and see, 5% will make, 10% really doesn't make that much of difference, to your point, Councilman Alexander.
I understand, but I think it was...
But it makes a huge difference for someone that's making higher wages, not just for them individually, but for the budget of the city of Gallatin. And so I've, you know, I've wrestled with those same challenges. But when I look at how do we provide the critical services for our citizens in the positions that we can't get people for, this is a solution, it's short-term. And again, we are providing a hazard pay supplement for all of our employees that is, is...
I just think it's gonna create a problem. This, that's just my personal opinion, you don't make it right for all.
I understand.
I know, I, I would feel if I was working in a different department, like I use for example here, I would feel very smited if you gave all these guys here raise or increase and didn't give me one, and I'm a councilperson too. You know, I, I would have second thoughts about my position.
When I talked to the...
That's me.
When I talked to the department heads yesterday about it and we started talking about, you know, how do we wrestle this with, say, the supervisors and the higher-level employees? And I said, this is really an effort to make their jobs easier. Because right now, those supervisors and those admin, you know, those, those people doing the hiring, they are constantly training, they are losing experience. This is to help them. They're making good wages and they're less, you know...
But my, my point is help everybody, don't help a select few.
Well, we are helping everyone with the hazard pay supplement.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. You giving everybody here a nice dinner, then some of them, you give them a dinner and a drink, is my point. If you gonna give everybody a dinner and a drink, give it to everybody, not...
Yeah, I, 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 I really don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be that different than how a pay study happens. And that's where you look at the market and the competitiveness for certain jobs. And so it's very likely that a pay study is gonna come back and say, these higher-level people, they're in the market, but these low-level people, no, they have to be bumped up. And so, and, and, and same for jobs that there are plenty of people willing to take, you don't, you don't have to pay as much because there's more supply. But when there's less supply and the demand is higher, that's where those wages need to go up. And our vehicle to be able to do that has always been a pay study. But we are in unique times. And when you had these agencies around us, we've got some near EMS, some near ECC, some near sheriff's department, and they just snap their fingers and they've got a 15% increase. Well, guess what happens in our Gallatin Police Department? And, and so we have to mitigate these specific instances.
I understand exactly what you're saying. But I, I'm just the kind of person that likes to be fair across the board, that's, that's what I'm saying.
And I think that what I would say too, Councilman Alexander, is that if it was all just council people that were being paid different scales, yes, that's different. But we're not talking about that, because I would have a problem with that also. But we're just talking about people that are needing to get the increase so that we can be a better city and all of us will benefit from that. That's how I see it.
My, my thing is to show how challenging times are is, is we all know Paul Rayner that owns probably 30 Sonics around. Paul and I at dinner the other night was talking and his people that start out, they make really good money because they run off tips. They make more than minimum wage just starting out. He's 450 employees down. And he's got situations where that he's having to shut his stores at 5:00 in the evenings because he has nobody staff him.
Right.
You know, it's not only that, but the cardboard, the ketchup, the hamburger meat. I mean, it's just the most unusual times that we have ever seen in the history of our lives. And, and we're just gonna have to do something and try our best to navigate through it. And, and I do understand your perspective, John, because I said the whole time that my employees are the, you know, that's, that's your number one asset. And Paige brought that to everybody's attention, but we're gonna have to try to find a way to start paying these people. And I guess this is a start and hopefully we can continue down this path and...
I was just hoping when we start, we start fair.
I understand.
I just, like I said, I'm just expressing my opinion.
Well, I mean, I, I, I've wrestled, 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 wrestled with this. And I honestly do think this is fair. It's, it, it, it's, I'm sure that there are employees who have to be watching this meeting saying, well, what about me? And again, it's that supply and demand for certain positions. And when you look at our laborers in those departments, not a lot of people want to do those jobs.
We, we heard it all over, but we're gonna be hurting worse. You wait, if we do it this way, I think it'll come back to bite us, I really do. I hope it don't, but I believe it will.
It's temporary until we get to pay studies.
It's till the end of the fiscal year is what I'm proposing. But just let me, let me, let me spell out some of the challenges with what you're presenting, Councilman Alexander. I'm proposing 10% low-wage employees. That means that someone making $30,000 a year, if it were a whole year and it's not, they'd get an additional three. Guess what? Someone making $100,000 a year who's not likely to leave the city, they'd be getting $10,000. And so we're really trying to keep it specific to these low-wage earners so that they can get some more money, but that it doesn't put the city in, in a, a, a fiscally challenged position and that we can get to the pay study and get through the pay study so that we have concrete evidence for exactly what it is we need to do with all of our employees.
Mayor, I, I agree 100% with what you just said, but I think you need to look at all the low-wage employees that we have in the city. And we have a few more than what you've got on this list and, and they're just as important.
That's all I was saying, you know?
And they're all, and they're much lower, and some of them are much lower wage than what we've got on this list now. So I just want you to look at all of them that are low-wage employees.
We do have some low-wage employees.
I know you can't do it across the board right now, I know you can't. But, but we have some low-wage employees that mean a lot to this city and we couldn't operate without them.
And then, and you know, and that was kind of where we started it, but then you start looking at, okay, low-wage employees, where do you draw the line? Because you start increasing low-wage employees and all of a sudden they're up there at... You start increasing the lowest wage employees and all of a sudden they're above the low-wage employees. And so then you bump them up and those low-wage employees are at the medium-wage employees. And so it keeps happening. So that's why we created this scenario where we address critical infrastructure because I think that's a case that we can make to our citizens and to our city employees. You know, if these things don't operate, our health and safety is compromised. You know, our, our police department can't go on calls, our fire department can't put out fires, our water is compromised, our utilities are compromised, our trash isn't picked up. I mean, those kinds of nightmares are the things that we're facing if we continue to lose people and not be able to fill positions.
One thing that I was shocked, and I think we all got the information on it, is just in, say, our Don Bandy's department, how much it costs our, to send somebody to the academy to suit them up $70,000, $80,000 and then lose them to somebody else. I mean, that's, that's...
All that investment by the city then becomes the county's asset.
Well, we passed a few years ago, and I talked to Ms. Flood about this today, but we passed a few years ago that we reimbursed if they don't stay here with us three years. And I don't know if we've ever reimbursed a penny.
And, and you know, Jimmy...
It's on our books right now.
I, I, I had a little discussion with the mayor about that today and, and, and I'm, I, I might see things a little bit differently than some other people. But I wish that we could recoup some of that money if they decide to leave us within their contractual term.
That's what we got on the books right now, we passed that a few years ago.
Right, but if you've ever tried to collect a debt that's owed to you...
I collect them every day, that's what I do for a living.
Well, I know, but that's your 100% focus and I guess we could hire somebody to do that, but I don't know that it would...
It's not hard, we got two cities attorney, we got two city attorneys that work for us.
Can we not just rip...
Hey, why have we not done that?
We, we are doing that, but what hap...
We're not doing that.
Why can't we just deduct it from their final paycheck?
You cannot do that legally, you cannot do that legally.
Cannot do it legally?
What can we do legally? That legally, there is a Tennessee statute. Well, I'm the city attorney for Gallatin, I'm gonna make sure we follow the law.
But we can, we can garnish their check from another...
Let's take it off our books if we're not going to enforce it.
Yeah, but who's gonna track those people and, and where does it fall? Say they have child support, say they have other liens against them.
So why don't we have it on our books? Let's take it off if you're not going to enforce it.
Well, no, we're trying to enforce it, but I'm saying...
This is not on the agenda tonight, let's talk about that some other time. Let's talk about what we're talking about, please.
Oh, it is on the agenda.
Well, what I would like to know...
Yes, it is, it's on the agenda, employees pays on the agenda tonight. And look how many, look how much more money we could have paid if we had that money.
Not the other day, what we're talking about.
And I've had my hand up like five times.
Sorry.
It's all right.
I have, I keep seeing that on the microphone.
I understand what John D. is saying completely. And I know that it's impossible to do across the board 10%. But I'd also like, what I would like to know for one thing is what about the resentment within the departments? Like, for example, I know that lieutenants don't make that much money in the fire department. I mean, they're not, so what's gonna make the lieutenants not resent that they weren't included and...
Well, my hope in my discussion with the department heads has been that, again, everyone's getting the hazard pay supplement. But two, I think that there's a real level of frustration among the... of frustration among the leadership, say lieutenants, captains, battalion chiefs, that they're just constantly training, and they're not, and they're not steadying their workforce.
But they're, they're also losing some of those, some of those higher-paid people, too, and to, because of the same thing. But then, have you talked to the other department heads to see how they're going to feel?
Again, that's why I tried to encapsulate it with critical infrastructure, because I think that, I mean, those are the areas where we're seeing the challenges. I know where the openings are, I know where our lowest wages are, and trying to figure out how to overcome that in the short term, so that we don't have a critical downfall.
This is till the end of the fiscal year or the end of the year?
Let's try to keep it in one area. We've got a lot going on here.
We got four discussions going on.
Yeah. Let's do one at a time.
Till the end of the fiscal year or the end of this year?
Fiscal.
Fiscal year, so that's, okay.
You had asked how many employees are included in this, and it's approximately 150. I don't have the exact number, but it's around 150 employees that would be affected.
Okay, and this, you're going to bring this up at the meeting on Tuesday, right?
If you all are open to that. If, if you want to vote to move it on to first reading. Well, actually, it would only be one reading because it is a resolution.
Make the motion, we send it on.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I think we need more discussion.
Well, we can do that Tuesday night.
Now, if we vote and send it on now, because we, well-
It's not a vote, we're just voting to send it on.
Not a vote, it's a vote to send it on. That makes sense.
That did make sense.
I like you make sense with your doing.
So, to me, to me, when you all vote at a work session-
I'm sorry, I wouldn't try to be smart, I really wouldn't.
I'm not either.
To me, when you vote, this is what I think, when you voted a work session to move it on to a council meeting, you're saying, let's go ahead and consider it at the council meeting.
And then we can change it like we want.
Yeah, I don't look at it as you all saying, oh, I support it, so let's move it along to council now.
It's this first time we've heard of it, I mean, so everybody's going, you know, I'm sure everybody's going to go back and talk to the department heads and-
Well, and I, and all the department heads are going to say, yes, we need it, too, but folks, where we're suffering is our critical infrastructure.
Paige, I was just having a little discussion, I just asked Craig a question when all this was going on, about our rainy day fund and how much we put in it a year, and I know that the capital is there to maintain our bond rating, but have we been at the same amount of money every year that we try to put into our rainy day fund?
Rainy day fund is 20% of our operating expenses, so it fluctuates each year.
So, could, I mean, if, if we do pull that percentage down to take care of our employees, then that would, that could hamper our bond and our ratings and stuff like that? I see that answer right there. I didn't know if the capital would offset that, that's what I was trying to figure out.
And I think when you start trying to put it for employee expenses, I mean, in a more dire circumstances, maybe you could make a catch. What we're trying to do here is prevent those dire circumstances.
See where I was going with that?
Yeah, I understand.
Any more conversation?
And I also think that all of our employees should, should know by now that we do have this pay study happening, and ultimately, their pay is going to be, I mean, if we can afford it, is going to be what the market says it should be, which is not going to be a same increase across the board. It's not, that's not what happens with the pay study. Pay study looks at market competitiveness and what the demand is, and so, in that scenario, yes, council members would all get a certain, using, you know, your analogy, council members would all get the same level of pay, but, you know, journalists might get more because they're harder to attract, you know, whatever it is, it's just, it's based on the market competitiveness.
I'll, I'll point out one more thing that I'll say.
Market, market wage demands is how that's set.
One more thing I'd like to say, and then I'll get off the subject. What my employees mean to me, if you guys remember, it was in '08, '09, '10, when the market really tanked, I kept my employees, and I kept them at the pay because I thought they was valuable. When I personally lost a chunk of money, when I could have laid them off, I could have dropped their payroll, I chose not to. That's how my employees was important to me.